All right. Good morning, everybody. Today is Wednesday, May 6th. It's a little bit after 10 o'clock. I just want to list the number of people and who's in attendance for this Google Meet. We have five board members in attendance, Matt Lamb, Lorna Klatschbach, Justin Stavel, Chris Hackey, and Tim Peterson is via phone. We do have some administration here this morning. Lynn Gayler, Connie Rockow, Matt Peterson, Nicole Morosco, Jordan Jaeger, and myself. And we do have two representatives from the SEI Design Group, Rich Little and Ted Mountain. We're here just to have a budget workshop. And Rich and Ted are available here this morning. As I mentioned to the board, one of the decisions that the district needs to make is to either move forward or not with our capital project. Just to remind the community that unfortunately, due to the school closures, our capital project vote was suspended. And so we need to make a decision on if we do go out to vote. It would be part of this upcoming budget vote, or if there would be some delay in that. So I'll turn it over to Rich and Ted with, you know, some updates and some information.
Do we want to go through project scope? Or I'm not sure if there's specific questions. We have, you know, some thoughts we could throw out.
Yeah, I don't think the scope of the work, I mean, nothing has really changed as far as what the project entails. So I don't, I don't think that is necessary. I think the concern might be, given now the financial situation that school districts and the economy and the world is in, we just need to know the best route for Oakfield in moving forward or not with this capital project.
Well, we can jump in and Rich, I don't know if you want to start. I can start. We have some thoughts on recent projects we've been working on, also current projects in construction that have continued to move on. One of the things that we are seeing for sure in the last month is a improvement on the value costs received for districts from the construction industry. We just bid a multimillion dollar project last week and it came in probably around 80% of the estimate. So the, the numbers are getting very favorable right now. I think the industry is kind of looking to restart itself and get things going. And, and, you know, that adds obviously to the economy itself. So we're seeing contractors that are fairly hungry right now in terms of looking for projects. So that'll be good if you want to go ahead in terms of pricing. We had already reviewed in previous meetings that this project is no tax impact. So that's obviously a good thing. There are some unknowns with the state that, you know, we're not even sure where things are going to go in the future. Right now, things are set in terms of getting money available to the district. So, you know, if there are changes, let's say in a year, we don't really know how that's going to impact us. Right now, everything looks stable in terms of being able to access the aid. So that's a good thing.
The key there is, Ted, if I could just real quick, the key there is that when we vote is when we get locked in with the state. So that the funding sources and the, and the percentages and that are locked in with them at that time. And that we don't know where they're going to be down the road. That's kind of an unknown. Historically, when there's been a situation, obviously not exactly like this, but in other occurrences throughout history, the state has added or done things to add some stimulus for construction. So if they, if in the future they were to make a change that was negative, where we'd lose aid or percentage, there's no way to know what that could be. But if you vote now and then in the future, they add those incentives, still able to access those, you're still able to qualify for those things. You would modify scope or justify it, but there's, there's been opportunities like that in the past. It is a one thing leaning towards doing now versus later.
Obviously, there's the public perception, which you guys are going to have to sort through yourselves. This is a difficult time, a tricky time in terms of, you know, the economy and, and people that may have lost their job to be furloughed. But however, that a lot of those are going to be coming back, hopefully. We're hoping for a strong second half of the year. And alls I can say is most of the districts we're working with right now are pretty gung ho on construction. They're looking at the fact that the kids are out as an opportunity to get early starts, get more work done than they could over the 45 days of the summer. And with this, you know, with this recent adjustment in, in the, the construction impact on the, on the bids, it's really helping them out to get more than they originally thought they could get in terms of pricing. The only thing, other thing I would add besides, you know, the issue that Nicole may want to hit on enough drop off of aid and, and debt is the fact that there are a lot of safety and security items in this project that I think will be good for the public. And we can make some changes on the fly to some of those designs. We talked about the entrance ways at both schools. If there are things that we want to incorporate into the design that come out as recommendations for our new normal, we can definitely do that going forward without any issue at all. Other than that, I would say that besides the negative to the, to the public perception, I think this project is, is including a lot of infrastructure items Jordan may want to talk about, but there's a lot of nuts and bolts in here, windows and air handling units and things that are going to have to be done eventually anyway. So even if, even if we did delay it, I think it's things you're going to want to go back and look at regardless. So it's a good time to do it from our point of view.
Ted, if I could jump in with a question, it may be more for Nicole and John. So you said the bids are coming in at 80%. Our reserve, Nicole, it's, it's supposed to get to 2 million. We have about 1.7 in there now.
Yep.
So our reserve is 85% funded, bids are coming in at 80%. Is there any way we can do this project without adding any more to our reserve and hoping that our bids come in at 80%, which means we would be fully funded if the math and logic works there, which it doesn't always. Also, or if that's not the case, can we pull this capital project back to a number to where what we've already tucked away and you're telling us we can't get back? Can we pull this project back to a number to where what, what we have saved can cover as much as possible and maybe all of it if that 80% number is accurate?
So let me understand, you don't want to put any more money in the reserve fund? You just want us to go with the what we have?
Yeah. Give me all we can get from that.
I mean, we could certainly move forward and then reduce the amount. I mean, the, the set amount for construction is an up to amount. So it's up to 15.3 million. We are using up to 2.1 million in reserves and other appropriated fund balance essentially is how we wrote it up. And then we can bond up to a certain amount. So that's how everything is written. Just because it's there doesn't mean we would have to necessarily use it, if that makes sense.
Right.
So we could go ahead with not putting more money in the capital reserve. But again, to Ted's, I have no idea what's going to happen next year if we get this project approved and then put bids out. So that being said, I don't know if we would need that additional amount to make that a 0% tax. I mean, that's the tough part right now. I mean, with everything, there's not a lot of guidance. There's not a lot of information. We're, uh, we're in a fluid environment here. The other thing I did want to say to the board members is because a lot of this is maintenance type stuff, we can duct tape and, and hold things together and, and do things out of our general fund budget, which we don't necessarily want to do, given that A, we won't get aided and B, it won't, there won't be any consistency to it. So like the window project, we need windows. That's going to happen. So this will give us the chance to get aided on that essentially.
Now, is, is aid determined based on what we're doing? Like they don't aid everything, but the way
They don't aid everything.
The way we have it set up.
We try to write it in much.
Adable.
Right, yes.
So even if the bids are coming, even if these bids are coming at 80% right now, we're still only going to get a certain percentage of aid?
So yes, but it's based on an approved amount. So we assume that 5% won't be aided between five and 10 typically in projects. And then we try to get as much possible aid and we write things. They do request for information. I have gone through the process of the final cost reports previously here. And I spent a month and a half getting information from the architects, getting information about aiding the painting of a wall, because they don't want to do that because they consider it maintenance. Now, there are certain ways to get aid on that, but you have to prove it. So it's all about what we can do to write things the way that we know they like to see them. And then we have to prove that potentially after for the aid piece. So even though we have a $15.3 million project, we're assuming between 90 and 95% of that will be approved for aid at a 92% rate. And so that's what, all about covering that local share. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, I guess, I guess my question is, can we, can we move more of this project into phase two? Can we, can we scale this project down a little bit? So what we've already got in our capital reserve is adequate and we don't have to take any of this year's budget surplus?
So I guess to answer that, once we start the design and once we start moving forward, we're going to partner with the construction manager and the evolution of the documents will get estimated at each phase. Each one of those phases is how, is the time period where we'll start crafting and we'll react to budget constraints or changes. If it has to evolve to start looking at scaling out, we'll talk about putting in alternates so that pieces of the project would be part of the bid, but potentially not part of what you would accept. So that allows us to leverage the good bid market that we'd be in, but maybe say that work will have to wait until the next phase just to accommodate funding adjustments. So just because we make a vote now, it doesn't mean we lock in those expenses right at this point. You have the flexibility as the board to work through, work with us as we, as we develop that project and the phases and, and components of it throughout the whole process. So there's, you work with the knowns that we have now, but as we evolve and different things come in, if there is incentives that are, you know, historically, we've seen things like that, as those come in, those are dollars that can offset and adjust. So those are all things we can do. At the end of the day, the vote is for a maximum, doesn't mean you have to spend to that. We can craft that down to suit your needs.
I think what the voters need to know though, going into the vote, if we were to do it, is if we're going to appropriate some of this year's surplus into that reserve. So we're talking about this being budget neutral. It may be for this year, but it won't be for next year if we've got to use $300,000 to fund that reserve and then we've got to increase our taxes next year because that $300,000 wasn't available to us, offset whatever might be coming to us from the state. So I guess what I'm looking for is, you know, if I'm having discussions with voters of why they could or should support this, it's that the money's already been saved. We can't access it and we're not going to put any more money from this year's budget away towards this capital project. So I hear what you're saying after the fact, we don't have to do it, but the, the vote comes first and, you know, for voters, that's, that's an assurance that would make me more comfortable. I don't want to have to spend any more money this year's dollars. That's, and I'm wondering if, if that can happen, if that's an option for us, if we're willing to do that or what other people think of that.
I think that's a good idea. I think that if we could make that happen, that would be the best and probably the only way for voters to support this.
Well, I, I think too, you know, I, I, I try to look through this through my, my grandpa's eyes. And anytime and a vote like this would come up, he would say, well, why does the school district need this or why does the school district need that? And oftentimes there were, it was things that they didn't need. And in the scope of this project here, I really do feel like what Nicole is saying, a lot of this is essential. Those windows are essential. They need to be replaced. And I think that that could be a better sell to, to taxpayers that say, listen, we're not going to get a new sporting complex. We're not going to get this, that, or the other. These are items that you need to have in order to move forward as a district. So I, I don't, I don't, I know what you're saying, Matt. I agree. Cause there are people are going to say, well, why are we moving forward this capital project? And that could be another argument to say that's why we are.
So what's the hesitation about putting money into the reserve to fund it fully for this year is that you don't want people to think next year, as we face a budget deficit, that we would have to cut programs and services when we put money away for a capital project? Is that, is that kind of your theory, Matt and Lorna?
And maybe not so much what people think, but what reality is, is if we, if we take $300,000 away from our tool cabinet to help with whatever's coming from the state, that we've got to be reactive rather than being proactive and kind of keeping these funds at our disposal to just be ready for whatever's coming our way. Whether it's one year of, of deficit issues or if it's three to five, like some people are saying this, this could end up being.
Yeah, I, I don't, I understand what you're saying. I just think that I don't, for this project alone, I know we need this stuff and to make it tax neutral, we, we would want to have that fully funded. And based on our surplus estimates for this year, I think we have the ability to do that while keeping additional funds that we can use for the next year that we've already appropriated in the budget from reserves and from our unappropriated fund balance. So I think that it generates additional aid for the district as well from a building aid standpoint. And as we move forward with our tax cap, which they have said nothing about, even though everybody's very nervous about it, our debt versus our state aid ratio is a factor in that. And because we have a capital exclusion, if we don't proceed, we have over $600,000 in debt falling off of our, our budget in the next couple of years. If we don't flatten that out, we could be in the situation where we have a negative cap in certain years. Not that I disagree with that to some respect, but as Jordan and I came here and we were finishing out the last project, it was a lot of items that we still needed. It was boilers, it was roofs. It wasn't fun, fuzzy, awesome things like athletics. These are things that we are going to have to maintain or continue to duct tape. The pool is a great example. We don't have $12 million to have a new pool. We've been duct taping it together and we still have issues with it. In Jordan's, even after the last project where we did some work on it, there's still issues and we're not being aided on those. So I think from a responsibility standpoint, the way I look at it is if we're getting that aid fee back, we're in a better position than slowly spending 50 to $100,000 a year on these maintenance issues and not getting anything back from that. Does that make sense?
It does. I'm not suggesting 15 million to zero. I'm saying, can we go 15 million to 12 and a half or 12 and three quarters? That still gets us windows, it still gets us our pool. You know, the, maybe the front parking lot, which I think had the most discussion, maybe it doesn't give us the asphalt changes at the front parking lot or, you know, what's, what's the lowest on that list that if we wanted to, if we wanted to not tuck any more money away for this project, what, what doesn't go on in that capital project?
Yeah, I mean, to me, it'd be the front entrances would be less important than, than the, um, the parking lots, but I think they both go together. I mean, we've been talking about the safety of these parking lots and the fact that it's, it's a free for all up there. I mean, I, I guess I just don't know how much longer we can live with safety type issues like that before something happens. Because what happens when something does happen and a, and a student or a staff member gets injured out there? And then, then what do we do then? When we had the ability to do something about it, but we didn't take the action? I, I don't know. I don't know the answer on that. I just, to me, I'm surprised that something hasn't happened already.
My question to that is, or about that is, those front parking lots and the way that our traffic flows now were designed by architects and engineers and safety people for prior building projects. Why all of a sudden have they become so unsafe? And is that a management issue that we can correct that way? What, what changed to make it the recommended way to have our traffic flow to now it's a safety issue?
Can I answer that partially, Lorna? I think part of it is our parents are dropping their students off than ever. Less people are taking the bus. Let's start there. And then we have more seniors coming here and parking and driving and then potentially our staff numbers in the parking. And I don't know how the layout was determined in the past or who determined what that was, but I do know that the, the numbers of people riding the bus are less than they were 10 years ago, 15 years ago. So that's part of it to me. I mean, Rich, you and Ted, you might be able to speak to that like a little bit more, but that's part of one of the major issues I, as I see it.
You answered it correct. It's, a lot of it is evolution. None of us were a part of how it came to be. The parking makes, you know, the parking areas make sense and you guys are utilizing them. It really becomes a control and our control isn't, isn't an issue in general operation. It's mostly during arrival and departure. And Nicole covered a lot of how that's evolved and changed. We know the human nature is if you are not giving clear delineation, people are going to meander and crisscross and things like that. So the stuff we're doing is just organizing it and forcing people to go to certain places and then separating that major congested area where we have the buses dropping off and public circulating in the same place. We need to make sure those are separated. So I don't, I don't know if we can really answer exactly what you're asking for, because no one knows how it really came about to begin with.
I, I do know, and I don't want to be considered cynical or uncaring because I'm not, but if we couch anything in terms of it's for the children, you have to be an ogre to oppose it. And these are really difficult economic times for everybody in the district. So we have to find a way to do the best for the most people and of course, keep children safe. Is that something our SRO could do? Is manage the traffic in the morning at the elementary school where it's deemed to be so dangerous? Is there, do we have alternatives that would save that amount of money? Can we do the parking lot and not the other front entrance? I'm just brainstorming now. What could we do to solve the problem that would stay within the boundaries that Matt Lamb has just talked about?
And I mentioned the front asphalt. Maybe that was a bad example. There's tennis courts in this capital project. There's asphalt out back that's in this capital project. Maybe, maybe I threw out the bad example, but there's, there's $15 million. You're not really up $2 million that could be put off. I mean, it seems like there's a couple million. I, I also feel like as a board, so we're getting all the headlines about what's coming here from the state. And as, you know, some of us are clicking on some of these headlines, some of us are watching some of the other districts Zoom meetings and, and seeing how other districts are responding to what's coming here. And, you know, boy, I don't feel like there's been any response at Oakfield, Alabama yet on what's coming, what's potentially come from our way. And I just, I don't think I would support putting additional $300,000 away towards this project. And it seems like we still have a project, maybe just not as big as, as what it was originally intended to be before the pandemic.
I think a lot of this is going to depend on the rollout that we go to the public, public relations and how we can sell this. So basically they see it's not going to be any cost to them because perception is reality. We got a lot of people hurting out there right now and they see that we want to push through a cap in the project. They could be voted down.
Yeah.
And I know there is some support, there's, there's some support out there for this too, if we do it the right way. If we are able to assure people the things Tim's talking about there. So I, I don't think it's, the support is completely gone, but I'm not sure it can look like what it looked like when we did all the community meetings.
All right. If I could, if I could just comment on what Rich and Ted had said, if, if the, you know, the bids are coming in, you know, under what we anticipate, if they're coming in at 80 or 85%, it almost sounds like we could do all of this work and still have additional monies left over. I agree with Nicole and, and the administration that, that's here is that these things, kind of like what Justin said, that they're, they're necessities. We need to fix them one way or another. And if we, can we do it through a capital project to get state aid? Or like Nicole said, every, every year we're spending, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in duct taping and repairing this. Unfortunately, you know, the time is short. I, you know, I, I do think everything on that list, you know, needs to be addressed. That's why they are phase one. But going back to what Rich said, I think as, as if it gets approved and as the months go on, there's a chance to scale it back. It doesn't mean if we're voting to vote this $15.3 million that we need to spend it all. We can look at the designs and prioritize within all of that, what needs to be done. And again, we haven't heard from the governor and, you know, even mid-year cuts next year. If that obviously hits us, then maybe we do scale back at that time, you know, this, this work.
Can I also say something, Matt? I don't think we haven't responded to this. I have a plan for cuts and for potentially appropriating more fund balance as we move forward. But I mean, I, I don't know if that was a good response to the email. Lorna, I had a lot of good questions last night through email and I responded back to the entire board. I don't know if you got a chance to look at that, but I don't want to move forward assuming something that nobody knows. I have a list of cuts in a document that John and I have shared that are potential cuts as we move forward. So I think while I haven't been out there saying that, oh my God, we're not going to get $200,000, here's what we did to cut. The administrators and the staff here have already made sacrifices on supplies, contractual equipment to address those concerns. So while I, I haven't, you know, been very vocal about it, I think we have concerns. And I mean, I just don't know how much evidence I want to have out there. I don't want to scare people about their jobs. I don't want to scare people about not getting things they deem essential to teach kids. So I guess I feel like until we know more about the cuts potentially, we should be proceeding as business as usual with a plan, which, you know, John and I have, as we proceed to hear what the governor has to say about the cuts for next year.
Yeah, I, I hear you about the plan, Nicole. I guess, you know, what I'm referring to is if we moved forward with this capital project, that we would be taking a true action that it were to be approved, we would be appropriating money from this year's budget towards this capital project. So I don't, action versus plan. So I, I get you through emails and, and yeah, we're getting ready and we don't have the details yet. When we've got the details, we've got a plan. But if we take $300,000 from this year's budget and put it towards a capital reserve, that's an, that's an actual action.
Right.
Those are two different things.
Yeah. It means that, well, then that means that we don't have those dollars, that $300,000 to avoid having to make the cuts that are in your plan for next year because we put them toward the capital project. It's, it's a very difficult situation.
Right. And then, I mean, I guess I, moving forward, while I understand that, if we think that this is going to be a three to five year situation, which I do, how long do we live with appropriating reserves and fund balances before those are completely wiped out and we're in the point of not having any of that? And then, then if we don't have a project or we have a scaled down project, what would that look like? then if we don't have a project or we have a scaled down project, what would that look like in terms of our debt and our capital exclusion for our tax cap? So they're, they're all very complicated things that we haven't been really given a lot of time to have conversations about. So it's unfortunate and I do understand what you're saying. From that respect.
So, so here's what I'm wondering. You say, Nicole, that we've done a lot of duct tape items that were not aidable, correct?
Before the last project, um, the before the roof project with the boilers and all that. But we still have a lot of duct tape that we do.
Okay. So if we do those duct tape projects right now, is there any way that we could show what that look, looks like from the last year? What we've done in duct tape projects that if we didn't pass this capital budget, we would have to continue to do?
Well, I think, I mean, probably. Jordan answered that better. I know there's a lot of stuff in terms of the, the heating and cooling units, um, at the elementary or the cooling units, the elementary school that have been leaky, uh, the returns there. Lynn might be able to speak to the bucket that's sitting under her hallway almost daily in the winter because of the, the snow that blows in there. The ability for people to get on the stage, the inability, let's say, down at the elementary school because there's no access. Same here at the high school. Jordan, do you have anything to add to that? Things that the pool, the pool is a great, a great one. We've been having all sorts of issues with that.
What I'm trying to say is, is that that's been unaidable and that's coming straight out of our, our pocket. Right, right from our budget. So that would be for me like, hey, we're spending a lot of money on this. And if, if this capital project moves throughs in these areas, this A, it's going to be aidable. And then we're not going to be spending money in an exponential way because at my house, if there's a problem in my house, it's only going to get worse over time if I am the dummy that continues to fix it. So if I have somebody else come in and fix it and it's done, um, and I get some aid from that, then hopefully that prob, that problem won't just get exponentially worse.
Yes, and you're, Nicole's absolutely right. There's things that we have to take care of that aren't payable that are coming out of my budget that are costing us money every year. That's one aspect of it. Another aspect of going forward with this project and trying to get as much as we can is that because of COVID, I'm almost a hundred percent sure there's going to be things that we have to do building wise that we'll have to pay for out of our budget right now. If we have a building project, like Rich says, we can adjust our building project to cover those costs as well. So there is a lot of upside to having a building project and having, um, the favorable construction budget. To be able to cover that stuff and not affect the local share of taxes. The $300,000 you're talking about in capital reserve, that buys us $3 million worth of money. Well, that, that's the state will pay us three. If we put up $300,000, the state puts up a $3 million. That, that's a serious number there. You've got to kind of, you know, going into these crises like this, the big thing we lack is money. And if the state's willing to put $300,000 towards, or $3 million towards us for $300,000, is that something that we should do?
Let's remind, let's remind ourselves of timelines here. Hopefully kids are coming back to school in September. And absolutely you're going to have to do all that work for when those kids come back to school in September. When is the first shovel going to go on the ground for all this money that we're going to get from the state to do this project? Rich and Ted, I mean, we've, we've heard 18 months, so. We get from this, we're, we're, hopefully this pandemic is long in the rearview mirror. By the time we're putting shovels in the ground for this project we're talking about.
Yeah, but it's going to, it's, I think it's going to leave a lot of things that there's going to be changes that are going to be made to how schools operate, how schools, how they want schools to function, how to set things up. So that if this happens in the future, it doesn't, you know, we're ready. We can get by, we already talked about sinks in the entrances. I'm looking at putting in temporary sinks at entrances to, so people can wash their hands coming into the building. Just a simple thing like that that will help prevent spreading things. But there's going to be issues like that coming up that we need, that we're going to need to pay for in all senses. Having that money available to pay for them is not necessarily a bad thing.
I don't think that those things get rolled out. I mean, I think they want things done immediately, but they have to give districts time to roll these things out. I mean, I hope we come back to school in September too. But the amount of stuff they're talking about doing in terms of social distancing. And I mean, I don't know if you heard the governor yesterday, but him talking about reimagining school and why are we thinking about this in this old manner? I mean, it's a sad state of affairs because given that, then none of this would be even something we should be discussing if we were just all virtual, which
He's crazy. That can't happen. That's, that's not going to happen. Before that, uh, there's no way. Teachers will go absolutely ballistic. There's no, and so kids won't learn. It's just not going to happen.
Right. I agree with you, Justin, but I mean, to have him say he's going to have Bill Gates, figure it out for us, I mean, is, is a scary.
I'll believe it when Bill Gates drives up to Oakfield. And then, uh, you know, drinks a shot of milk from one of Matt's cows. I, there's no way that that's going to happen.
That they would look for the American Pediatric Association, who says that less screen time, down to no screen time is the best for young children. So I hope Bill Gates does not convert into screen time.
Matt, just to circle back to your question, you're correct. A massive project of $15 million, the time to do the design and everything else pushes us out of ways. However, if the funding is in place and we scale those projects down to smaller and we're reacting to direct requests from facilities planning, there's ways to expedite the reviews and things like that where we can leverage some of that money sooner. Again, these are all variables. We, we understand that this whole project is going to have to morph and evolve. Uh, one of the things I talked with John and Nicole about yesterday, SCI is a, is a company. We understand that there's a lot of unknowns on this, even from our end. We're still trying to figure it out. We're still, still trying to understand what the state wants, what they're going to be mandating. We're going to be moving ahead. We've developed the task force internally and we're going to be moving ahead, researching and chasing down what we're finding from the state and the federal government, the, all these agencies. And we're crafting a, a model of what that looks like on a school. And we talked to John and Nicole yesterday about using Oakfield, Alabama as our case study. We feel it's, it's a great partnership. It's, it's really a perfect model at the high school, middle school and an elementary school. So this is something that we're going to do at no cost to the district. Just so that we can all see how this unfolds and the timing with the project works conveniently too for us, that all of those things can unfold together. This plan is going to have to develop and, and maneuver from cost perspectives, scope, prioritization throughout the whole process. And that's, that's a collaborative effort amongst everybody on this call right now.
Yeah. So I think we're talking about blending what, what we need with what we think we can get our community to pass. Chris, Lorna, Justin, uh, you know, Lynn sitting at the table there. We live in this community, so we need to blend what we feel like our neighbors are willing to, to vote into approval with the needs that you guys are, are talking about there. So I, I think you've heard how I think we can blend those two things. Tim, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I was going to ask Nicole a question.
Sure.
You there?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. Now, obviously there may be a lot of changes for the fall due to, you know, requirements from the state and all that stuff. Do we have money, uh, that we can use in case we have to do some physical alterations? Or we have to spend money to comply with any kind of, uh, state mandate or requirements for changes in the school environment?
Yes, I think we have some additional surplus still built into our budget, um, for these types of items. And we have the ability to appropriate more fund balance if we need to and reserves. Depending on where we're at, I know, uh, Jordan's budget has some leeway in it, uh, for that. Potentially for building upgrades anyway. Just in case something happens that, you know, we need to spend 10 grand on. Um, then yes, we have that and we have some, again, some flexibility within our budget already. I didn't cut out all of our excess, but I, it just depends on what that dollar of value is.
Right, right.
So if we're looking at a hundred thousand dollars, do I think that we could swing doing that out of our current budget? I could find a way to do that. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be easy, but I could, you know? So the answer to that I think is yes. Um, I'm trying to be very cautious because the situation is just so fluid.
Right, right. No, that's the best approach.
Matt, if, if I could just, um, maybe throw this out there as well, you know, um, in our prior budget discussions, I, I, I think that it might be the board's, um, I guess, you know, decision or the board's, um, motivation to go out, um, with this budget for next year at a 0% tax increase. Couple that with the capital project and we say that it's tax neutral. I think just proves that we had originally gone out with this capital project, saying that it was tax neutral. And certainly we had separated it from the budget vote. And now that we are actually coupling it together, um, that, you know, it is tax neutral and then a 0% tax levy, I think looks very, very good for the community moving forward. Because now if we do couple it together, you know, I, I do understand the concern that you want to say it's tax neutral, but then you can't go out with any sort of tax increase. That, that may be confusing to community members. But if we decide, if the board decides to, to do it with a, a 0% tax increase, I think, um, that's a selling point too. That, um, the capital project along with, with our budget for next year, doesn't have any sort of, you know, increase for the taxpayers, given obviously this, this financial environment. So, um, just food for thought.
I have a clarification question, maybe back to Rich or Ted. If we're not going to put shovels in the ground and for 18 months, then we don't have that advantage we spoke about at the first part of the meeting, that we can get work done without students being in the district or in the building. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, that's correct. These kids are out now, but we don't have any projects ready to implement, um, other than small things we're working on with Jordan. So the major part of the project would be back to a normal type of school year. I was talking about a project where we already had, it was already under construction or scheduled for the summer. So they were able to expand their construction time.
Right, that would be nice.
There are things we can do to speed the process as, um, if you guys decide we want to move forward with the project and put it on the vote as we know, as it is currently, Rich and Ted's team can come in and start doing some of the work that they would initially do after we, um, after we get the approval in June sometime and, um, start working on, um, some of the before design stuff that they would have to do that might take a little longer. So they would speed up the process of getting the, getting the documents completed that we have to submit to SED. And get going on that stuff.
And that's a matter of what I mentioned earlier about packaging and looking at the projects and how can we accelerate those? And again, you're going to have to craft to address what may be coming at us. And anything that we can do to accommodate those in the construction project versus the local, your current operating budget are going to be better. So yeah, you mean, you're not going to take care of the, we're not going to be able to take advantage of the bid market today. But the sooner we are, the closest, closer we are to what the environment is now.
If this project passed the vote on June 9th, when could you take advantage of the bid market? How soon?
Well, in terms of the design phase for this project, I think we had scheduled about six to nine months, Rich, I want to say.
Yes.
So that would be typical. But as Nicole said, if we started some of, normally we wouldn't start a lot of the design work till after the vote. If we started now, we could get another month on that. And if we wanted to take advantage of a favorable bid market in the fall, we could probably accelerate things. My only concern is if you remember from a lot of the committee meetings, people are obviously concerned about input and we don't want to, we want to go fast, but we don't want to go too fast so that everybody's comfortable with the design. So it would be a matter of working with the district on, could we accelerate it quick enough to get it into SED? But still have the appropriate amount of committee input and user group input. And then we could look at options for SED approval as well. Once we get the design done, let's say we accelerate it and get it done in six months or less. Then we can see where SED is with their review. And if they're out, you know, six, eight months with their review time, we could go to an expedited review, which is an option for the district to have a third party review done instead of SED. And we could probably get that approval in about, I think we've been seeing those in about a month. So there are things we can do to accelerate the process. You know, normally we would say nine months for us and maybe six months for SED. But I think we could, we could really accelerate that if it's something we want to take advantage of as fast as we can.
What would be the chances that we still have a favorable bid market? Looks like eight to 15 months out. Right now people are hungry and bidding low. But by that time, if things have rebounded, then we may be competing for contractors who are already committed. So we still have the favorable bid market that far out? You think we can? I know that you don't predict the future.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be hard to say. I mean, I think, um, this is going to be a slow buildup to normalcy. As Nicole mentioned, it's not going to be something that happens overnight. But at the same time, what's going to affect that as well is, uh, I've already heard some things from the state about, um, potential incentives for construction. So we could be looking at a favorable market in four to five months, but that could totally change if they come out with an incentive to get the economy going on construction and say, give you additional aid. So that's going to be something that would greatly impact that, that construction market.
How would it impact the construction market? I'm not clear from what you said.
Well, if, let's say they come out in, in three or four months with a, a package of incentive aid to stimulate the economy. And they're offering additional aid for school districts on top of the aid that they get. As soon as they announce that incentive, there's going to be a rush for districts to get on board and take advantage of that aid. So that could end up increasing the amount of construction that's happening. And then, you know, we're going to start to see the, the changes in the costs.
And that could happen within five or six months.
It could. I mean, we don't know when Cuomo is going to come out with, with something. I mean, I've heard them talking about it, but there's nothing official yet.
Right. Thank you.
John, you'd said maybe Taro is going to look into a timeline of, is there a window that closes on us here? Where the, the funding would no longer be available to us? Could, is this a boat that could be put off to the fall? If, uh, hopefully things have gotten a lot better by then, what's, when do we have to do this by?
Well, I guess that's what we need to decide. Um, our first notification to the Batavian, um, I believe is very generic and that's got to be done by this Friday. The second notification is by the following Friday, um, to the Batavian. And I believe that needs to have all of, um, the propositions that the board, um, will move forward as far as what the community members will vote on for this budget. So the timeline unfortunately is very, very quick.
We couldn't propose this capital project to our district in the fall and just leave this off the budget propositions now?
We could do that, but then we'd have to go back out, do, um, all the, all the stuff we've already done in terms of advertising and the, the. the, the hearing for the, um, so yeah, we can. It's just gonna be, we have to repeat all the things, steps we've already taken.
Yeah, the school attorney said that currently, right now, if we just move forward because of the delay, um, we were fine. Um, we would certainly, you know, um, try to advertise it, include, you know, a flyer and some, um, additional information within our mailers to the community and, and, you know, like a quick district letter. Um, so we'd be okay, but again, if, if this is delayed any further, Nicole is right. We'd have to kind of run through everything that we've already already have mentioned.
Do you have any good news?
A publication, uh, letter from the superintendent. Educating and explaining things to the public as far as the savings that we're gonna have and it's better to proceed now as opposed to, I think, I think it was Justin.
Yep.
Um, showing that how much money we spend duct taping things together. Um, I think that's gonna be our best approach. Uh, the people have to realize and they have to know that what we're doing is fiscally responsible. Um, and that's gonna be by, by a newsletter from the superintendent, uh, highlighting everything and showing the, the savings that the district is going to incur.
That, that's certainly, that's certainly an option. Um, you know, that would, like I said, kind of go hand in hand with, uh, the vote, if, if the board decides to go out with a zero percent tax increase, I think that, that also helps. Um, you know, but that certainly the letter can just review, um, where this money is coming from. And, and I understand there's a lot of, um, you know, possible miscommunication. I think we did a fantastic job. We were only forty-eight hours away from a vote. And I think we did a, a, a great job in trying to explain where the monies were coming from, the scope of the work. And obviously now, you know, two months later, uh, things, you know, might get, you know, lost in translation. And certainly I understand, uh, given the financials of, of the community and, and just what the environment that we're in, where someone may question, where is this fifteen point three million coming from? Certainly, you know, how do I vote yes for something like that when, you know, all these people are being laid off and furloughed and, and, um, communities are struggling? So certainly, uh, very quickly, we would have to go out and explain what we have, what we had done before in regards to, um, you know, the state aid and, you know, where, you know, the monies are coming from.
Right.
I, I kind of agree with Tim. Even if it was John, something that we put on our website, like a video of you kind of just, just saying, here's where we at, where we're at. This is, you know, how we're gonna responsibly move forward during this, uh, period of time. Um, it just seems like the deadline here is very, ah, it's, it's, it's tenuous for me. Um, I hate making decisions that I don't know all the variables. Um, it's almost like putting an addition on my house with not knowing I'm gonna get a paycheck uh, in, in, in a couple of months from now. And I, it makes me very nervous. Um, I do understand, you know, to this point where the money is coming from, and I agree, it's, goes to safety issues and what's absolutely essential. Um, but it, it's, it's a tough decision.
I, I guess what I'd share is that we can, we can make decisions on what we know right now. And as it evolves and changes, if we have to vote, the vote in the, in the recommendation of the board to do the vote doesn't, it doesn't mean you have to proceed with the project. I mean, that's, we're gonna move forward, we hope to move forward and, uh, get these things addressed with you. But again, the, the whole process has to unfold and evolve. There's a lot of unknowns. I, in my tenure on a board, my local board, years ago, I never faced anything that you guys are facing right now. And, uh, I have great appreciation for your process and the amount of energy you're putting towards this. Um, so y- yeah, I mean, you're correct. There's, there's unknowns. So I guess my recommendation is we do know certain things now. And we do know from state historically that if we lock in, we lock into the aid, we are locked into that. Um, so we don't, if we wait and it changes or drops off, then we lose that opportunity. But we still have to make those decisions as we move forward based on what happens. So this doesn't stop you from having the authority to, to deal with those decisions as they come about.
I had my mic off, but I appreciate that you said that.
You know, I, I, I think what we gotta look at is we know as far as what we're going to get with aid, what we're going to, um, be able to present, it's, it's not gonna get better. You know, I, I don't think all of a sudden next spring that the state is gonna come back and say, oh, guess what? We're doing ninety-seven percent of everything. So I, I, I think financially right now, we're, we're at our peak, so to speak, you know, as far as being able to get this done. Um, you know, it's just, it's very, very important that we get out and explain again to, to our district of, of what this is with, with a letter and putting that on our website, putting that on social media so that people can see it again and again, even if it's an over explanation, you know, that way we, we have it out there so that they see this. Um, you know, I think if we do get locked in, we, it's just that, you know, we're, I don't think we're gonna come back a year from now and say, oh, we're, we're doing half of what we told you. Uh, you know, being the fact that it's tax neutral, like, you know, and going out with zero percent, I think it does reinforce that. And, you know, if people say no, they say no, which we don't want. I don't want because, you know, what I really appreciate about this project is that it's, you know, there, it's not a lot of flash, you know, it, it's substance. It's the things we have to get done. It's, it's, you know, um, you know, things we have to do now so that we don't, uh, anticipate a larger cost down the road as far as our windows and our other things, you know, it's not as glamorous as, oh, look, we got this brand new complex here, but, you know, we don't need that. You know, we, we need things like this done so that, um, uh, it's just making our, our district more functional, you know, it's, it's functional, it's not fashion that we're doing here. You know, unfortunately, the timing is horrible, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm furloughed right now, I get it. Um, I, you know, I'm hoping I'm gonna be back soon, but like a lot of people, it's, it's, I'm in a wait and see pattern right now. Um, but I, I think as far as the benefit to our district with what we're gonna get and how this is gonna go forward, it, it's not gonna be better. And I, I think it's something, you know, we gotta maybe take our shot with it.
Yeah, I, I, I tend to agree with Chris as well. It's not an ideal time, but I like the idea that, um, kind of the combination of our budget and then this, uh, capital project having a zero percent, uh, tax increase really actually does kind of lay it out for the taxpayer. Um, it, it, it just may be the time to do it.
Sorry, Tim, I had us muted. Uh, Tim, does that agree also? Um, I, you know, I may have the minority opinion here and that's, that's fine. I definitely don't support, um, taking three hundred thousand dollars. Um, that could be at our disposal to soften the blow of what may be coming our way and putting it towards this. Um, but you got five of us on this and every once in a while you gotta be on the wrong end or the minority end. So I, I do not support, um, putting additional three hundred thousand dollars away for this project. If it could be a scaled back project to where what we've already talked away, um, can work for us at a twelve million dollar, thirteen million dollar project, I'd be all for it. But I don't support spending additional three hundred thousand dollars on this.
Matt? No one's saying right now that we have to put this money away this year. That's not, I don't think that's where we're at. Um, if we wanted to wait to fund it next year, I mean, and see where we're at, I, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that, but we, that's not what we're, we're not agreeing to the three hundred thousand dollars right now. That does, that's a separate issue that we can have as a board, um, and John and I, um, at a later date because we're not even really sure. Some of the estimates that I gave, I know we're still paying on some of the contractual items. And again, I'm still not even a hundred percent on where we're gonna be at year end. So to say that we're agreeing to that now, I don't think that's the case. I think, um, we're looking at an up to amount. And if we need to scale it down and that's where your heads are at and we can do that, then, then that's what we do.
So I would prefer to scale it down too, Matt. I, I, that's where I'm at personally. I'm not saying that we would go the two, full two million. I agree with what you're saying. If we can hold that, that part of the decision off, uh, that's what I would like.
So Nicole, um, in order to move the three hundred thousand dollars into that capital reserve, that's a board vote to be had.
Yup.
After the fiscal year. So the board, if we voted no, we're not willing to do that. It would mean that the local share isn't funded up to what it needs to be. So it would mean a tax increase because we didn't have the money or a scaled back project because we're not willing to, to put that tax increase on the district.
Um, yeah, to some degree, but it also could mean that we wait to see where we're at next year at this point. And if we have a surplus next year, say, let's say best case scenario, the governor gives us all the money. We get all of our stuff, we're operating at the exact same level we were and we have three hundred thousand dollars in surplus next year to somehow. Then we can absolutely at that time, we can, we can, uh, agree that we're gonna, we're gonna put that line into a transfer into the capital fund and we can, we can do it that way as opposed to, um, funding it through that reserve. You know what I'm saying? To still keep that. If we decide this time next year, we can do that. I'll figure out a way to do that.
Yeah, so I think in, in July, right, would it be our July board meeting? After we've closed out the fiscal year, you'd be asking us to, to transfer three hundred thousand dollars in the capital reserve.
Um, I don't know the answer to that. Yes, it'll be after the year is closed out. It'll probably be July. I'll have an, I'll have an estimate in June. Um, it's gonna be tough because people aren't here to get their, uh, payments, some of them in and to get things approved. So I might have a little more of a lag in where I, when I know exactly how much. But I'm gonna have an estimated amount for you and I'm gonna keep you updated at the June meeting to let you know what I think we'll have in surplus, um, for year end. I am looking at the point right now, I don't wanna leave money in our unappropriated fund balance. Uh, you know, we can only keep a certain percentage in there. I only say that because I'm afraid that the governor is gonna start looking at our unappropriated and saying, so we said, we, we said, you know, we could cut the money and not give it to you. Look, you have all that unappropriated, just use that this year and we're not gonna give you the money. I want, my goal is gonna be at this year end to put as much money as I can into the reserves that I know I can use and that are easily accessible to the district with either a ten day hearing or just board approval. So that's my goal for this year.
So to go back and try to clarify the answer to Matt's question. If we were to vote to continue on with the project and not put the three hundred thousand dollars from surplus toward that project, toward funding our part of it, up to the full two million.
Yup.
Could we do that? How late next year can we do it? Can we do it after all of the governor's take back sessions? Can we still go out with a tax, without a tax hike? What, I didn't quite.
For this year?
For both. I think Matt's, I, I share Matt's concern. I don't wanna use three hundred thousand dollars of our surplus, current surplus to fund this capital project in these hard times. If next year, we're gonna need to make some drastic cuts in order to make our budget and continue our programs as they are.
So I would, uh, we'll know more when we have, say this is approved, we do design and then we put everything out there for bids and we do a separate bids on certain things like, um, let's say we think that maybe we've all agreed that the tennis courts can, can use, uh, another resurfacing before, before we, we go out and do them again. That's like a two million dollar roughly, um, cost. Maybe we all agree on that and we just say, we're gonna put that as an additional item that's not, uh, with everything else. So that if it comes in low or high, we'll know. Once we know, I think, more about the scale of the project and the actual dollar costs, that's when we have to make that decision about the, the excess. So that would be into next year at some point. And I'm thinking, so even if, uh, Ted's saying, you know, like a six month turnaround, we're still looking at December, which is when that final look back period is gonna happen. And we'll know exactly what the percentage will be early January that he's gonna not give us or give us. Did that answer your question?
I'm thinking.
Okay. So we can, we can wait because we wouldn't even be sending out bids until after that process is, is um, done, sent into SED and reviewed. And we'll know, we'll, we'll have a good idea of what it's gonna cost us at that point, probably a pretty good idea. Our construction manager would be able to give us pretty much the cost for that at that time. So we can wait to fund the rest of that, but it would just have to be in a different manner.
And we would still have the three hundred thousand dollar, for example, surplus from this year to fill in budget gaps for next year?
Correct.
To avoid cutting back our programs? Because if what Chris said is true and we're at the high point right now, it looks as though we will need that money.
Right.
To keep our programs going.
Right.
It, it seems as though we can get behind this and not commit to the full dollar amount is what I feel like I'm hearing you say. Um, it, it'll be a board decision exactly what of the projects happen and it'll be a board decision, uh, whether or not we increase the funding in the capital reserve. Um, that said, there'll be three new board members in the coming, three out of the seven of us. So three, that are part of this conversation right now will make a pretty good chunk of, uh, the decision there. Um, but it, it, it seems like tough times are ahead. It's hard for me and I'll, I'll just be one of seven. But it'll be hard for me to, to wanna see us put more money in that fund. And I would sure be advocating next year, if the community passes this, to scale this project back. Um, and I understand that people inside the building wanna see investment in that building. But as Lauren was saying, it, you know, there's, there's a potential, there'll be a few less people in the building.
Correct.
Because of what may be coming. So we, we wanna support our people and we wanna support our kids and all the programs and the staffing that we think is appropriate there right now. And if we're taking dollars or putting into capital investments, it, it might mean there's a couple less people in that building that here and today we thought was necessary.
Right. So let me just get from the people who know the answer to this question uh, one more time or clearly. It's possible to scale back this project if the public approves it? At a future date, is it possible to scale back the capital improvement project if the public votes to approve it now? Is that a correct statement?
Yes, that, that's correct. Um, again, this is, this is a, a maximum scale. It's, it's all, it's almost kind of like the, the annual budget vote. Um, you know, we throw out there that here is, here is the, the budget. They vote on an amount. That does not mean we spend every penny of it. That's just the maximum amount that we can spend. So with capital projects, yes, you can scale things back. This is just the maximum amount um, that the voters are approving. So, you know, we wouldn't be able to go out and, and spend any more, another cent more than, you know, the fifteen point three or what we have. or what we have as far as our obligation financially. So you are correct, yes.
So what would have to happen is as the designers go forward, they would have to be careful what they link together in one phase or each phase of the project in order to keep to our list of essentials and not our wish list of grand new complex.
Correct, and those will be evaluated at each phase of design. So at each phase, as we start to develop the drawings closer and closer to, to the bid documents, we get an intermittent estimate that comes from our construction manager. And we review the scope and the estimates and ensure that we want to keep going that way. That's when we take adjustments, maybe things start moving towards an alternate or maybe things start moving to later phases. But there's multiple points between here and bid date. Then even after we get the bids, we're gonna review those bids, we're gonna look at it and then offer a recommendation back to the board. And the board again has to make sure that that's what they choose to proceed with and they'll approve those vote, those bids at that point. So if you want to check on this process, where the process will keep evolving and decisions will have to be made.
Thank you.
I think just to build on what Rich said, that, that phase approach gives you the opportunity to make decisions not just based on the list of scope, but also the cost. So if there's a cost benefit analysis, you know, the tennis courts cost X, the site work costs this, the cafeteria costs that. You'll get better numbers as we go through from the construction manager to kind of evaluate each piece in relationship to what it, what it is for its, its actual work and what you're gonna get out of it, but also the cost of that particular item.
Okay.
Project people there. Go ahead, Tim. I got us off unmuted. This is Tim asking a question here for Ted and Rich.
It's a, it's a curiosity question, I guess. I know that we're talking about possibly changing, you know, the driveway situation, the parking lots, things like that and the drop off of kids. Do you guys, do you guys have a physical security specialist that you consult with as far as best design? Or how, how do people come up with that?
So we've got a, a site engineer involved in the project and that's what they do. Their, their focus is circulation, traffic flows, working with the, the governing bodies, the DOT, whoever we're adjacent to. But that's what our civil engineer specializes in and that's who we bring to the table for that.
Okay, do you bring law enforcement as well from a, from a safety perspective, safety and security perspective?
We have, I've done that in the past. If that becomes an issue, obviously our site engineer is gonna bring best practices from other projects. Same thing as Rich mentioned with the site circulation, also with the new entrance ways. If there's best practices, we'll bring those. And then if we want to get, if we feel like there's need for input from either, we've had committee meetings before during design with law enforcement, first responders, the fire department. You know, if we incorporate any type of safety glass into the entrance ways, that's either, you know, resistant to damage, all the way up to bulletproof, which is kind of a little overboard, I think. In most of our projects, we don't go that far with bulletproof glass. But if we get into some of those discussions, we have brought in other safety experts as well as law enforcement and first responders.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that would be important since obviously what was deemed safe in other building projects is no longer deemed safe. I don't know.
Yeah, well, there's also a lot of different perspectives on things like glass. I mean, if you make glass bulletproof, that's great for a certain event, but it's not so good for a, an event where you might have a, a fire in the building and, and fire department needs to break through that glass to get in to fight the fire. So there are different, yeah, there's different, definitely different ways to look at things and, and we would try to take all that into account and get as much input as we can and give that to the board to make the final decisions.
This was actually talked about in some of our committee meetings where people brought this up and talked about whether we were gonna do that level. And, and at that time we said, it's a discussion that we have to have yet and that'll be part of the design phase. Because you're correct, you know, there, there's so many different variations, gesture entrances. You know, how far do you go with it? And at those points, depending on where the conversation goes and, and the field from the board and the directive of what's necessary for your community is gonna depend on how and who we bring in as experts to assist. So it's a great conversation and there's a lot to be talked about in that whole area.
Yeah.
Jordan mentioned even, even the hand washing stations. You know, these are things that we're just starting to talk about. Three, four months ago, we would have never said we were gonna put a sink in your front entrance. But now based on where we are, how do you, how do you, what's your arrival look like? How are the students gonna come to the building? What are we gonna be in three, you know, in five months from now? They're all good topics and they're the things that are gonna unfold as we start this process.
Definitely interesting times.
I guess that's one word.
Yep, that's for sure.
Are we okay there then, John? I mean, it sounds as though the board has some comfort that we could scale back. And we, we still feel as though we have some, some ability to decide how, how we want to fund this capital reserve. So I think there's a comfort level knowing those things. I, I do think there's gonna be some trust on the part of the community if we do this, that they've got a board of seven people that's gonna watch out for that in the best interest. And like a couple of people said, I think we've got maybe a little work to do and helping people understand what, how, how it is that we could still go forward with this project. But I, I would, I would probably have a voice here against, but I, I can get behind, I can get behind getting the community to vote on this, knowing that we don't have to do the full amount of it if things get ugly next year.
Sure, and I will, I will certainly first, you know, draft a letter. I can run it by the board before it's sent to the community. I can work on that this afternoon. My points will be that, you know, we're not changing this project. It'll still go out as a $15.3 million capital project. I do want to be careful in providing too much information because sometimes that gets lost in translation. But I want the community to understand that we're, that we're moving forward, that, that this is, that this, you know, is, is financially responsible, that it is tax neutral. I can review with the community, you know, where the monies are coming from. And certainly I can run that by the board in the next, you know, 24, 48 hours and get that out there on multiple platforms.
Firstly, I think it would be important that you include the part that the project can be scaled back based on our need to preserve program and the governor's future action.
And in these uncertain times moving forward, like you said, with the, with the governor's look back windows, that if things threaten, we start throwing downhill, we'll adjust accordingly to make sure. Yeah, absolutely. I can do that.
Do we have any other propositions that we're putting forth for June 9th other than possibly the capital project one?
Well, obviously we have to discuss the, you know, the budget and the board needs to decide about, you know, the tax levy. And I believe there was a bus proposition. And then there was another proposition to start a new capital reserve because we're closing on how, is that correct, Nicole?
Uh, that's correct.
And then there'll be a fifth proposition on there, obviously for the election of board members, three.
Should we, should we take the capital reserve proposition off there if, you know, for all the reasons we're talking about right now? We don't need to be thinking about the next project or just yet. It seems unlikely we'd be putting any money into it in the coming.
Well, we were talking about doing a 15-year length, like extending the length for a, a longer period of time to just have it in case. I'm not opposed to it. I do think that depending on where we end up next year, we should add that back if that's something that.
Yeah, I think that is something that gives us the opportunity to start, but it doesn't mean that we have to fund it or put money somewhere.
Correct.
Just the, right, it's just by voter approval that we have this new reserve. But again, obviously in the next, you know, three to five years, depending on where all this goes, it does not mean that we have to fund it. It's just there. There's really no, I guess there's no gain or loss if we, if we went out to, um, and put that on there for the voters to approve. And Nicole, you had mentioned it was a 15-year?
Yeah.
So, so then why is it there? I mean, if you have to give me that explanation, how is the, the average voter going to, to perceive that? I, I don't see the significance of having it there.
Because with this rotation, our next building project possibly will come up in 2023, 2024. So all of these projects start rolling in. And again, if we do have any sort of surplus of monies that we want to throw in the capital reserve, just like we did for this project, it would cover the local share. Just so if we wanted to go phase two, phase three in three to five years with the next project, we have that reserve established.
I mean, it's not a make or break for me. It's something we could add next year if it. Uh, it's just something that we initially had proposed. If you guys don't agree to that, we can pull it off. But I think that we were just assuming that, you know, given that we have a lack of information, let's move forward as we plan to move forward. And then like John said, we don't have to fund that in any way. We don't have to fund any of the reserves. So that's where we're at.
So what were the five propositions? Again, the capital project itself, a bus purchase, establishment of a new capital reserve fund and what were the?
And the board members.
Okay. Thank you.
I got a question for Nicole. How do we look as far as reserves for the special education? Uh, just in case we get slammed with new students, are we prepared for that?
Uh, we are as part of the paring down of the budget. Based on all of this, I have, uh, removed some of my reserve in there to bring it down to, to a more, I, I don't know, reasonable for the time being. We still have the ability to appropriate fund balance if we have a special ed student move into the, the district and they're a high cost student.
Okay.
That's my plan.
Does that include, I wasn't clear from, you gave me a lot of good answers the other night, but is that, does that include the rehiring of new aides should that become necessary?
Um, yeah, I think if, if they're required to have an aide, then yes. That would, that would be in that cost that we would have to already have. It's not currently in the aide budget line, but it would be a budget transfer we could make to those lines if there's the, the need to add an aide at any point.
Okay, because sometimes aides are key towards preserving the quality of education for the regular ed students as well as for the special ed student who may or may not need to be removed to a safer, quieter place at times or to have extra help. So I wanted to be sure that that's in there if needed.
If you mean that part of the cuts included two attrition, not replacements, unless the need arises for them.
Yes, those are the ones I'm concerned about. Thank you.
Yep.
Ted and Rich, Matt, do you see any need for Ted and Rich to stick around?
It seems like we're all set.
We want to thank you for allowing us to be a part of this. It's been some great discussion. Hopefully we clarified and answered anything that you needed as much as we can. Again, feel free to contact us, reach out. John and Nicole know how to reach us. You can get us anytime if there's anything additional that you need from us or support in any way. We're here for that and wish you well in the decisions that you've got facing you. And thank you again.
Yeah, thank you very much for letting us join in and, and help out with any way we can. So yeah, any further questions, let us know.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks all.
Thank you.
Nicole, did you wanna, I know that there's really no updates to our budget from the last meeting. I don't, I don't know if Matt and the rest of the admin team needs to stick around either. If we can, if the board wants to. I, I don't know, but.
So I was just thinking maybe I would just, just start with a statement, partially reiterate what the questions that Lorna had. This budget includes no cuts to programs and services that we currently have. It assumes that the governor is gonna fund the state aid, as said, with a 0% tax increase to the district. And as we move forward, we would, we would, and know that there's cuts going to be made. We would look at either cutting our expense and just not spending in those areas and/or using some of the appropriated fund balance and reserves that we've already had in the budget to make up for that revenue shortfall.
Nicole, did you read that article on Batavian? It sounds as though Batavian is putting off for another two weeks. They're, they're gonna be right up against that tax report card, property tax report card.
Yeah.
It, it sounds as though they're really wanting to hear what Cuomo is gonna do in this first phase prior to approving a budget.
So here's the thing that I'm thinking just generally. So we have this first phase and then in July, we're gonna have another one. So we're gonna still have time to make decisions on cuts and/or using reserves for fund balances. And then once we get all the way to December, that one, we're gonna be already in the year. So we're gonna be relying on reserves and cutting where we can in terms of supplies and potentially contractual, but we probably have already spent those monies. So my gut instinct is we really, we look at the July date because they can give money back to us as these periods go forward. So I, I don't want to make any decisions where we're cutting or appropriating more fund balance when this is a max budget. So, so we know this is the max we're gonna go out with our budget for revenue and expense. So if something happens in, in this next period where they say there's gonna be a 10% cut, okay, we start really thinking about that refining what, what we think we want to do to make up for that difference, either in appropriated fund balance and cuts. And then we start to, to roll those out after the July period. Because the July period, he could say, okay, you know what? We were at 101% revenue. So when I said you were gonna get a 10% cut, now it's really gonna be a five. So I guess I'm looking at it as trying to move slowly with the situation as we know it more. And then if we get into, to January and they say, you know what? You're not gonna get an additional $800,000 in aide, then we'll have to. You're not going to get an additional $800,000 in aide, then we'll have to completely, in my opinion, use reserves because who's going to then cut? You can't cut half the work, you can't cut the workforce at that point. Um, you know, it doesn't make sense. You'd have to just start planning for the next budget season and what that's going to look like. And that's where the cuts or additions would, you know, to the reserves would come in, in my opinion.
Might he also say, I'm going to take away more?
Than 20?
Yeah. Governor.
If you take away more than 20%, then we might as well, I mean, if it's going to be a sustained period of time, I, what are we going to do? We can't offer a sound education to kids if we lose $2 million a year.
But it doesn't.
A million I can make work for the next three to five years and, and, but our budgets are going to be tight. Our budgets are going to be tight. We're going to use, uh, reserves and appropriated fund balance. That's what's going to happen. It's, is that why this is so scary, Lorna? Because we don't know. I'm kind of using the, um, the gap elimination when he was taking back money. About 10 ish years ago, he started to take back money. I'm using that average and looking at those year by year amounts and thinking to myself that it's going to look like that for some period of time. That lasted, it took back 1.5 million dollars here. That was the most they took back at Oakfield. Well, let's not say take back. That's what they didn't fund us fully in our state aid. So thinking about that, these are all the things that I'm thinking about, you know, is that we might have a year or two with a 1.5 million dollar, uh, decrease. And what does that look like for us? We have some ability to weather that storm with reserves. But if we consistently do that and we deplete all our reserves, then we're going to be in that mode of, of trying to save money, you know, and building up some reserves to a point. So.
Okay.
So for the proposed budget, so it would be, uh, Tuesday that the board would actually be approving this. You're looking for just a little dialogue from the board right now. If anything in there we didn't like, it doesn't sound as though people are speaking about any.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you were all comfortable with, with everything that was in there. Um, it's been a couple of weeks since we had the discussion. Um, and I, I just wanted to make sure everybody was comfortable so that when it came time to approve the budget, we didn't have to have more conversation about it potentially on, um, Tuesday. I mean, we could of course still certainly have more conversation about it, but the more we can discuss now, the better because the, if I know you guys are good with this budget, I can start doing those, uh, documents that need to be done for Tara. So that we can get those out. We can be ahead of the, the curve. Cause if we're going to have to do, send out all these absentee ballots, um, ballots, it's going to be all hands on deck in our office for a little bit, trying to stuff and get them in and potentially using some of the other secretarial staff here. Because we're looking at, I think Tara told me today, the board of elections is a 3,000, uh, person list. And if we're stuffing and mailing and postageing all of these ourselves and verifying that, we just want to make sure we got it right and we want, it's going to take a good amount of people to do that. So. I just don't want to put our backs up against the wall to be in a time crunch where we're, you know, where we, it's, I want to make sure that we make every deadline. And again, I feel that if we move forward with this budget, that's the max amount we have to spend. But we have a plan in place to reduce and or use appropriated fund balances if we need to. And of course, if we, and when we need to do that, those things will all be discussed in great detail with all of you. So, so that's my, that's my gut with all this.
Is it essentially our newsletter list is who we are going to be sending all these?
No.
What's the difference?
I think that the newsletter list, we don't even get a list. It's almost like the post office just delivers each one with, um, to every household. So I don't know the answer to that, Matt, because they've never given us an option and we've actually asked them, can we have a list of all, all the addresses in the district? And they say no.
Okay.
So I don't know. We're, we're polling the other districts of the best way to do it. Um, a- again, we're going to, our attorneys are having a, um, conference call tomorrow from 12 to one. Tara and I definitely are going to be in on that. Um, and we have questions that we want to ask them.
Nicole, do, in order to vote on the school budget, does one need to be more than just a citizen? Do you need to be a registered voter?
You do not need to be a registered voter. You need to be 18 years old and living in the district at the time of the vote. So that, that's the issue is that how do we even know that? Well, we're going to use school tool to, our, uh, student management to pull out the kids that are going to be 18 at that point and make sure they're getting one. The students in our own school, we want to make sure they have access to vote. But otherwise, geez, how do you know? You don't know how to get, get to all of them. I mean.
The guy that, you know, I met with the superintendent on Monday, um, we, we usually meet on Fridays to wrap up the week. Um, we didn't want to meet last Friday because obviously we were awaiting the governor's, um, you know, response to schools. So we met Monday and that was one of the first things that we all said was how is this absentee balloting? How do we guarantee that we hit everybody? And so we're, we're working through that. Um, it's very typical to see that we will do the best we can, but we'll also put out there on social media and on our website that if we happen to miss somebody, please call district office and we'll, we'll mail you one. Um, it's again, this is just, uh, you know, crazy times and the timeline is, is very short. So we're trying to get answers to all of this. I do know school districts that have already missed deadlines, um, for some of their things. And, you know, you kind of throw your hands up and say, you know, we're doing the best we can. So yeah, these are, these are questions that we don't know the answer to. We're doing the best we can. But, um, yeah, we do want to make sure we hit everybody, but it, but it, it's not going to happen. It's, it's troublesome because again, they're not registered voters. They, they just need to be qualified. And how many absentee ballots do you send to a household? We, we don't know. Um, and then we also need to make sure that, um, we're very, uh, you know, that these, that the votes are legal. Um, that, you know, people aren't voting. There's a whole, there's a whole aspect to all of this that, uh, we're all working through together. So.
It'd be interesting to see if your turnout is a lot higher. There, there'd be no way for you to monitor voter frauders. It seems like there's no way to know.
We did, we did talk about one way to do that is so people can't copy them is to put our raised seal on them. But that's about the only idea we have, and that would be 2,900 plus raised seal. Uh, things. So I don't know.
We have to mail all of these out and then also include a, you know, a postage to mail it back. So, um, there's a lot of, a lot of, um, finances involved in this for each district that once again, um, is in reaction to all of this. So.
Right. I mean, the postage alone is cost, is will cost the district around, uh, $2,000 just for the return envelopes. To send them back. So, and then not to mention, we have to buy all the paper. We have to buy, um, more envelopes. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that are going into this. I'm estimating it's going to cost us about $15,000. I'm thinking. Minimum. Well, because think about the number of, of pieces of paper that need to go into that absentee ballot. You have to have, uh, um, and we're going to know more if this needs to be done, but you're going to have at least one big 11 by 14 piece of paper. You're going to have two envelopes. You're going to have potentially another envelope because they usually have to put it in an envelope, um, and seal it inside the sealed envelope with their signature on it. So I don't know where we're at with that. We will have to find out more tomorrow, but we could be spending up to a little bit more in postage just to send them out. So.
This is where the community needs to understand, one of the reasons school districts are so expensive now is the unfunded mandates. When the governor says you're all going to vote by absentee ballot, he doesn't even take into account how much it's going to cost a district to do that.
Or times he doesn't.
You know, our first question was, you know, with the guidance of social distancing, that if you, if you can provide social distancing, um, that's great. If you can't and you're out in public, wear a mask. But we could very easily here, um, provide social distancing regulations if people wanted to come on campus to vote. We have the community room. We could utilize our SRO. We could have place, um, place markers so that people are eight to 10 feet apart. And so these are all the questions that we said to superintendents of, you know, it's, it's just, it's frustrating that if we're able to have a district vote from let's say 11 AM to 8 PM like we normally would, um, we would just put in, you know, some stricter measures in providing social distancing, but people could still vote on campus. It would save us a ton of money. Um, and you know, that, again, that's, that's the frustrating thing moving forward with all of this, um, that we're all just working through.
This may seem like an obvious question, but has anyone given that feedback to the governor or is he not interested in feedback from the people on the ground?
Um, both. We, we are definitely providing feedback. Um, he received a whole bunch of feedback yesterday in regards to him, uh, you know, uh, hooking up with Bill Gates and trying to, you know, re-image, you know, education moving forward. Um, so, you know, we just at this point unfortunately have to be responsive to, to what he says. Um, you know, we're, we're contemplating, you know, the end of the school year. What does that look like? Do we have to finish out the school year now that there aren't any region's exams? We're awaiting, um, protocols for graduation. I know, uh, Matt and JC and the administrative team were looking into avenues and venues of, of how to do graduation. But I was told, um, when the superintendents meet Friday, that the department of health from the area counties will be on with us because there's, um, protocols that we have to follow if, if and when we decide to do some sort of graduation. Um, but we believe that the governor is actually going to come out with even stricter guidelines as, you know, as the weeks go on about what can graduations look like. So it's, um, unfortunately we're, we're being very reactive. Uh, and that's the only way we can proceed when, you know, he comes on the TV and announces such executive orders.
That was truth, but it wasn't encouraging.
Um, one other thing I wanted to discuss in terms of the propositions. I reached out, um, about the bus purchases and I asked, you know, what if come July, the governor says we need to cut, you know, he cuts 20%? That's when we're going to, that's when we're going to be in, in a critical mode. One of the things that I would look at cutting would be the bus purchases. And so we can still have the ability to do that, um, even though I left, I wanted the proposition for us to be able to buy them. Um, because we do get aid on that and it does help us with, um, the maintenance piece of it. So there is still an, an opportunity for us to say no to that. Um, I just wanted to let you guys know that. Um, before, um, you agreed to putting that on the, on the, uh, ballot.
If it was 20% Nicole, what is that number to us? He probably said it.
If it's 20% of just foundation aid, that's about 1.8 million dollars.
Okay. And that's a number he has thrown out there as a possibility?
He's thrown out 20% and he hasn't said, if that's 20% of the total aid we get, that's more like scary, like three million?
Okay.
If you look at, um, our total state aid package, we're up between 1.3, 1.4 or 14, I'm sorry, between 13.5 and 14. So, um, a rough estimate of that, of total aid.
Question for Nicole.
Sorry.
Repairs and maintenance and everything for Elba?
I'm sorry, what was that, Tim?
Yeah. Do we spare, uh, do the repairs and maintenance for the Elba school district?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Just their buses.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So 20% could be two and a half million dollars? Did I get that right?
Um, yeah, let me pull out the exact number for you.
Doesn't have to be just.
Yeah, I'm thinking two and a half to three, depending on what he's considering state aid. If he's just considering foundation aid, we'd be looking at 1.8. If he's looking at all of our aid, we'd be looking at almost closer to 2.8 million.
Was 20% the number in 2008 during that gap period referred to?
Um, I don't know if that was the percentage. Um, I don't know if you guys remember, but in that time, the state comptroller, he had, had done a different, uh, Governor Cuomo had talked about a different funding of foundation aid. Their formula changed. And then, um, they weren't funding us in full. So I don't know the exact percentage. That's something I can get you, but, but it wasn't. I, I think it was more than 20% of foundation aid, if I, my recollection is right, because we were only getting about seven million at that point in foundation aid. So, um, that would be, hold on. Yeah, roughly 21%.
Okay. You don't have to spend any time on that. I'm just curious for the precedent.
No, I think if you guys are interested in that, I believe I sent to John, um, the, what over the years it was. I mean, I can pull it out and send it to you again, if that'd be something you'd be interested in looking at from that standpoint.
Yeah, I only wonder what, what has been done in the past because it's possible for the future.
Sure. Well, I'll send that to John today. He can forward it on to you guys. Okay?
Okay.
Okay. So that being said, I think the, the main purpose was just for this meeting to figure out what actually we wanted to have on that, that, um, proposition list. So as I've heard so far, we, we agreed to the capital project. Um, you'll be approving the budget. We don't need a dollar amount for, but obviously you'll be approving a budget at some point soon. Um, the bus purchase, I need a yes or no on. And then the capital reserve, you said you didn't think you wanted to move forward with.
My opinion would be to skip it. It just, I, I get that you've got it. You don't have to put any money into it, but maybe it strikes me as a bit tone deaf in the times and, uh, somebody's filling out a ballot and they get to that and they get angry and they say, what the heck? No, everything. So there, there just doesn't seem to be a need for it. I'd be really surprised if we had any money to put into it next year. If things turn out to be shorter, turn to what we expect, we can put it on for next year to fund it the following year.
Okay.
I agree.
Sounds good.
Hey Nicole.
Yeah.
Benefit to you if we do a straw poll on different things? So you have a better idea going into next week?
What, what was that?
I said, would it, would it be a benefit to you if we did a straw poll on the different items that we're talking about going into next week? So we found discussion for next week and, and basically you have a, a clear picture of where we stand.
Well, we need to know what resolutions we'll have on right now to, um, to give to Tara so she can publish that in the newspaper.
So Tim, are you talking about a straw poll of the board members?
Yes. Yeah. Where we, where we stand on different things.
So why don't you go through those? We can start with the capital project.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, so what we'll put on, we'll put on as one of the, um, propositions, the capital project, we'll move forward with that. And are we in agreement?
Yes.
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah, I think you have five there. Yeah.
Um, obviously we'll, we'll have the budget on there as well. And I will assume that the, um, you know, the board is in favor of a 0% tax increase, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Again, I think for our timeline, um, we do have a regular board meeting next Tuesday. Um, and that would be the budget adoption. So we can finalize that next Tuesday.
I just had to say, if we're going to have a straw poll, we have to wait for everybody's voice to be heard.
Tim said yes on that 0%. Austin, that Chris? Tim said yes on that zero percent. Uh, Austin, that Chris?
I will support it.
Okay.
Um, obviously, there will be a a proposition on there for the board candidates. That that's mandatory. And then the other two would be uh, the capital reserve.
So I'm saying no on that.
I see.
Chris, Tim?
I'm I'm in agreement with you, Matt, on the reserve.
Okay. Tim?
That's, okay, just explain that reserve one more time. That's for like uh, opening up another reserve?
That's correct.
Yeah, no, I'll go no on that one.
Okay.
And then the one would be the bus uh, the bus propositions.
Yes.
So if we had that bus proposition, we could still say that um, if if things got bad, that we didn't have to buy those buses down the road here in July, is what you're saying, Nicole?
Yeah, I'm saying if if we say, if we see in July that he really does have the twenty percent, we can just nix all of our equipment purchases and call it a day.
And then what would that bring us back then? How, what what was, I can't remember the cost of those.
So the um, we're we're planning on buying two buses and two cars. Um, the cost of the bus that's in the general fund, that would save us a hundred and eighty grand. But the one with the proposition, that would just save us future um, debt payments.
Okay, then I'm good.
That would be amortized over a five-year period.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Tim, would you stay there?
With the buses?
Yes.
Um. If there will be no, basically no cost to the district? Or a little?
If you um, we will be fronting some of the money with the general fund, but we do get aided on those because they're a capital purchase through uh, transportation. So we get, we would get the eighty percent on on the approved cost for those.
Okay. I say, I say yes to that, as long as it's explained very clearly to the public in the newsletter.
Yeah, I think that would be important. I would say yes to to it, as long as it's explained to the public that if times get really horrible, that we can nix that. I think that's important.
Unfortunately, some of these propositions are drawn up by school attorneys and they have to follow a certain format. So um, I can see what I can do. But um, these propositions are really spelled out in the um, I'm sure when you go and vote, you read them and they're pretty, they're pretty straightforward. But again, I could make that a message um, in the letter to the community of trying to explain the different propositions in there. And that's probably as I'm sitting back here thinking that I will do. Um, but unfortunately, um, when you read these propositions, they have to follow a certain language and usually it's all in that lawyer garb.
Well, that's all I was asking for is an explanation to be included somewhere in in your newsletter or your other letter that you're gonna send out about the capital project. The other thing I wanna know is how are we gonna introduce the board candidates to the public? Is there a way we can publish their bios?
Yes, we're working on that right now. Um, they have until next Monday to submit to us. And then, yes, we will have some sort of um, district newsletter announcement, um, pictures, bios. Yeah, I'll work on that with Tara.
The other thing that we'll probably do is explaining these things in the budget hearing. That will be videoed and put up on our website as well as a, as an additional piece to that.
That's good.
Was that everything, John, there?
Yeah, I think we got it. Thank you.
Okay, for our schedule moving forward, then, was there anything else that we need to wrap up?
I don't, I don't believe so. Um, our next meeting would be Tuesday, May twelfth. That will be our regular board meeting. There's just some items that um, we need to operate and move forward with. And then the, on that agenda, there'll be the um, resolution for the board to adopt the budget. And then basically, it's just on our end, um, providing those notifications, filling out the paperwork, um, getting the budget notices out. Um, so we are in compliance. And then the board would have a public budget hearing on Monday, June first. But according to the governor, that will be adjourned. And so I will work on how we are able to receive comments and suggestions or questions from the community. Um, I'm working with the other districts on how that would look. So um, we would then be able to um, explain the three parts to the, you know, to the community about the budget and then answer any questions if community members had it. And then the following week is the the vote. And the ballots would need to be in by that Tuesday, June ninth, by five PM. So a lot of stuff on our end to do.
Okay. And the the twenty sixth, you had us doing something on the twenty sixth today?
Yeah, I saw that.
Oh, what do we have there, John?
Um, well, what we're gonna do is after the the board approves the budget, we're gonna post the budget to our district website, make it announce, make announcements that it's there. And then that's the period where we need to um, somehow get community input or if they have questions regarding it. Uh, but I don't have anything for you on the twenty sixth. Um, and we would gather all of either the questions or the comments for Monday, June first. So no, there's just a little bit of a window there um, that the community has the availability to see the budget that the board has adopted.
Okay. I guess we're all set?
I believe so. Let me just double check that twenty sixth.
I thought there was something at ten thirty at the twenty sixth. I got, I just, I wrote my calendar yet last night, I thought.
Putting out something for comment, I thought. Hold on.
No, I thought it was the meeting.
No, what I sent you is a timeline yesterday. I do not have that on there. Again, our next meeting would be next Tuesday and then really Monday, June first.
Okay.
John, is there any word on how long school has to continue since they worked through their Easter break and?
Right. Good question. Um, I did go back to take a look. First of all, we wanna make sure that we we receive all of the the aid and funding for kids being in school for a hundred and eighty days. So taking a look at our instructional calendar, I could actually go back seven days. So our our instructional calendar, if we do not have any snow days whatsoever, students would be in session for a hundred and eighty-five days. We have used four snow days this year, so um, if they go through to the end of the year, they would be at a hundred and eighty-one days. Now, considering that they work through spring break and our spring break was six days, that's a hundred and eighty-seven days now that they would be in school if we go through to that Friday. We're also considering the Memorial Weekend where we do actually have that Friday off. I'm gonna denote that, that we just continue on with our learning, so that adds an extra day. And so really, we could actually count back seven to eight days from that last Friday, which would put us at about the Wednesday when actually regents exams would start. We could possibly end school on that day. And then graduation would follow probably a couple of days afterwards. Currently, right now, it's scheduled for that Saturday, June twentieth. The concern is, is that we have asked state ed and and, you know, and and what the governor's thought would be on ending school early, are we able to do that? We all have local contracts that um, you know, we're we're dealing with. And if there are no regents exams, you know, when can we end school? We're still waiting on that guidance, but whatever it is, I know that the area school districts will hopefully be on the same page. But um, you know, we could honestly close school, I believe it's the seventeenth. But again, I'm just waiting further guidance.
John, is there an anticipation at all from the superintendents when that's gonna come out? Because it seems like that should be coming out sooner than later.
Well, and and the the reply that we received was, we're on day fifty or forty-eight or a hundred and forty-eight right now. That's not on the top of their priority list. So um, that's what, that's the, that's the wording that we received. Because that was one of the first things we asked about regents exams and, you know, having a hundred and eighty days. Um, but of course, we need to make sure that we're following the executive orders, you know, to get to get approval and funding and that we're in compliance. So um, we're just, we're waiting on that. But if it is a local decision and as long as we can say and prove that our students were in school a hundred and eighty days, I would plan to close um, earlier than going through the whole rest of the school year.
I think that makes sense. I think it'll be a nightmare, though, if it's if it's a local decision. I I I really do. I I hope it isn't. Um, I hope it's from the state and then that seventeenth is that, is that kind of that drop that date for all school districts.
Right.
Wouldn't that depend on how many snow days people used?
Yes.
Yes.
So it kind of has to be an individual district decision.
Right. Um, the, we had used two snow days prior to this closure. And if you recall, the governor closed school um, on that Wednesday. So the Genesee schools closed that Saturday night before. So we did not attend school Monday, Tuesday. And his executive order is from that Wednesday, which is, you know, the eighteenth, which was our capital vote, um, through now. So we ended up using two extra days for that Monday and Tuesday. So um, we have used four snow days and we actually have one left. So but yeah, the the calculation of all this is a little bit tricky, but I've already looked into it and we could probably close school uh, about a week to a week and a half early, if necessary, or if it's our decision.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Lauren, for that question.
I have lots of questions.
I know you do.
So again, as this guidance comes, um, you know, I'll keep the board informed of of what we must do and what we tend to decide upon. And um, but be rest assured that we're um, very much looking forward to some sort of graduation ceremony for these seniors. They've lost a lot this year. It's just, it's, it's sad. It's awful. And um, we're gonna do the best we can to to wrap up the school year and celebrate our kids. Uh, there's decisions that need to be made on, you know, the final grading of students, um, pass, fail, numeric grades. You know, um, and we'll just, we'll keep the community informed and uh, unfortunately, it's it's day to day and week to week and we hate operating like that, but what we have to do.
Okay, sounds like we're all set and we'll get together next Tuesday?
Yes, thank you. And again, if anybody has questions about the budget, if they could let me know. I'm gonna start preliminarily working on the items that I need to um, get done for Tara. So again, if you have questions, please just let me know and we'll uh, we'll work through them through email or whatever.
Yeah, quick question, Nicole, before we leave here. I wanna make sure I understand, uh, we've, we are squared away with the two hundred uh, shortfall?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. You're welcome. Take care.
See ya.